Preparations prepared, so I will be happy to read introduction, the names for you.
I just checked. I have them, but.
Good, that's good, but I'm prepared.
You can run. I'm just here.
All right, well, the time is now seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. A roll call will show that all five board members and both student board members are present, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin today with commendations.
So we have a number of commendations for our students in the theater. These stars won prestigious Jerry Awards. The Jerry Awards presented by the Overture Center for the Arts recognized excellence in high school musical theater in Wisconsin. Under the direction of Jeff Shetzy, the cast won not only one, but two awards for outstanding musical. To put this in perspective, Greendale High School last won an outstanding musical award in 2018. First, Sixth Musical Teen Edition was an ambitious undertaking, and the team absolutely nailed it. The six queens put on an amazing performance with all of them nominated for the award of Outstanding Lead, and three of them winning the state award. Annie Brylow as Anne Bollin, Clara Zaboda as Jane Seymour, and Fiona Gloria So as Catherine Parr. So congratulations to the artistic team, cast, and crew of six. And you can come on up and accept commendations from the board.
You guys start right on time. It's a 6:59.
Oh, don't mess around. We're not on theater.
I'm going to go earlier. I like that, too.
We're gonna be like a stand right there. I'll take the picture.
You have two of the queens.
Two of the queens made it, okay.
It's summer.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, ready? Action. One, two, three, look at me.
Thank you so much.
All right, ready? Action. One, two, three, look at me.
Then following six, a large casting group produced two weekends of the Addams Family.
Again, the show was phenomenal and earned one, sorry, and earned one of the outstanding musical awards, with Fiona Gloria So earning a second award for outstanding lead as Alice Binicky, which I believe is what contributed to some of that confusion. And Ethan Reyes in the role of Gomez Adams won a Spirit Award, as did Kendall Coggins as a member of the ensemble. Anyone who attended the shows can certainly attest that these honors were well deserved. So congratulations to everyone involved.
Thank you. Adam, friends, go on.
All right, and then some. Here it goes.
He does that. My scribble on it.
We love that. I love that.
It gets cute, we're siblings.
Strooge and Mr. Chubb was one of mine and his family. One, two, three, look at me. One, two, three, look at me. Excellent.
And Perez, if you want to come up quick, too, you can, or I think it's better. I know you want to. I can. I know. I'll keep it together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just would like to say thank you on behalf of our department for the support of administration and the support of district and board. We feel the support, we feel the support and resources in scheduling and show choices. And as someone who's been around here since 75, it's really great to be a part of a great tradition of a school that supports the arts. So thank you very much. We look forward to it.
Thank you, Jeff.
I wish I could be there in person, but I am joining you from home this evening so that I do not spread my germs with the world. The last thing we need as we're preparing for a new school year is for the administrative team to go one at a time through illness, so I'm keeping my distance.
All right, well, thank you. Moving on to communications.
In-person registration events have been held at Greendale High School, and families are currently completing online registration as part of the back-to-school check-in. We are looking forward to welcoming students at the Meet Your Teacher events at the elementary schools on August 26th and the middle school on August 27th. Tomorrow night, the village board is hosting a public conversation about the economic development of the Southridge area. I have participated in the project, the consultant, and will attend another meeting on August 7th to further understand community input. A number of class reunions are gathering at Village Days, which will begin at the end of this week. Two of the classes, the class of 1970 and the class of 1975, requested tours. Kitty Goyette will lead one on Friday, and I will lead one on Saturday. The district received a $1,000 donation as part of an Eagle Scout project from Cole Nelson to be used for benches and reseating the soccer field at 84th and Grange. Thank you, Cole, for your work on this project and for your donation. If you've been out there, you might have seen some caution tape around the field as they're working to do some reseating of the field. And Cole is doing one of two Eagle Scout projects that are currently underway in the district, and I'm looking forward to recognizing both Eagle Scouts when they earn that award. The Park and Recreation Department received an anonymous $400 donation that benefited the Greendale Senior Social Club. That donation to support our senior programming events is very much appreciated. The Canterbury PTO submitted a donation to the district in the amount of $54,655 for the 5K playground. Yes, you're hearing that right, nearly $55,000 that they raised over the past year to replace the playground on the kindergarten side of the building. This is an enormous donation and a great undertaking by the PTO, and what we'll talk about during the annual meeting agenda is potentially recognizing them with a commendation at the annual meeting. The Reading Buddies Program was the recipient of a $500 donation made by the district by Beth Sorber. We would like to recognize and thank Beth for the donation to that special program. And finally, $50 was also donated to the Reading Buddies by Clark and Carol Richards, and we'd like to thank them both as well for their donation. And that completes my communications.
All right, thank you. Moving on to student updates.
All right, so the Greendale Deca Officer Team had a great time at Madison for the Annual Career Opportunities Workshop, in which they all bonded over teamwork activities and preparing schedules for the next year. Several of the officers were also finalists in the written test, role plays, and recreational activities. Graffiti Robotics also had a lot of fun at MRoc, the offseason McGonagall scrimmage, where they held a workshop about educating people about the first organization and let team members practice driving before the next season began. Fall sports are nearing the beginning, with captains' practices being held, and football starting tomorrow, girls' golf starting next Monday, and more sports starting within the next three weeks.
Continuing their season, Cheer is starting their I Want a Cheer camp for younger kids in the district today and wrapping it up this Friday. Yesterday, the Palms team took first place at the 45th Annual State Fair Competition, and last week, band students finished their three-week camp, learning their show and music, ready to perform at Friday night football games and competitions in September. Student council has also continued meeting. In their most recent meeting on July 17th, they voted on homecoming themes and discussed the class shirt designs and upcoming opportunities within the club. Students have also received their yearbooks from last year and taken their photos for the 25-26 school year at the readiness days last week, Monday, and today.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Rob, before we go on.
I do have one additional commendation or communication that I said I was done, but I'm not. As the students were speaking, I was reminded that this summer has included some interesting weather experiences that have required activities to be adjusted for heat advisories and air quality alerts. I continue to monitor conditions directly with the National Weather Service and follow their guidance. We have not communicated with all families, as we would typically do for winter-related inclement weather, but the administrators responsible for each activity have been in communication with impacted staff, families, and participating students. And I just want to say thank you to Jonathan for being helpful in navigating these circumstances over the last couple of weeks. And now I'm truly done with my communications.
So thanks, Dr. Mizik. That's actually the point I was going to bring up, is a commendation for the administration for your amazing diligence to the weather. As a parent who is affected by that, my kid is in SAC, and I am getting constant updates about the changes that are being made to the day schedule, the different walking routes that are happening, the option to opt out of certain events and activities based on the weather. So I think that your team has done an amazing job going above and beyond to make sure that parents are informed and accommodated, and that you're keeping the students' best interests at heart. So thank you very much for your attention to that. It has meant a lot as a parent to make sure, to know that you guys are paying attention and staying on top of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to comments or questions from visitors. All right, we'll skip that. So we will move on to approving last meeting's minutes.
I move approval of the regular and closed session minutes from July 14th, 2025, as presented in Agenda Item 1.1.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no questions or comments, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 An yes motion passes. Moving on to new business, we need to approve personnel and a teacher appointment.
I move approval of the teacher appointment as presented in Agenda Item 3.1.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's nothing to add, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 An yes motion passes. Moving on to approving the 2025-26 Employee Handbook.
So you reviewed a couple of changes to illness and the reporting procedures at the last meeting, and administration recommends approval.
Looking for a motion to approve.
I move approval of the changes to the 2025-26 Employee Handbook as presented in Agenda Item 3.2.
I second.
Looking for a roll call.
Yes.
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 An yes motion passes. And lastly, we will approve the contracted cleaning proposal.
Jonathan, can you speak to the recommendation for the contracted cleaning?
Yep. So provided in your packet is information regarding the three bids for contracted cleaning. Our current contractor came in about $65,000 higher in total cost, so we did a full background check regarding the low bid from Royalty Janitorial. All of the references provided positive feedback regarding the business that's been around for 39 years. We feel comfortable with this, and have had conversations with legal counsel about the contract, and they're helping us finalize final details for signature if the board approves that this evening. So we recommend approval of the contract from Royalty Janitorial of $278,720. This would be a three-year contract and would have a 3.5% increase for years two and three.
All right, thank you. Kathy?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Jonathan, for that, for always looking out for the best value for our money. $65,000 is nothing to, you know, look away from. That's a lot of money. My question, real quick, and I forgot to ask Kim this when we spoke earlier today, but so this is the high school, middle school, and Highland View. Do we just use our internal cleaning service, like our staff here to do the other buildings, or who takes care of those?
Yeah, so the rest of Highland View would be covered by that elementary staff. Canterbury is all district staff, and College Park is all district staff. And then the majority of the building cleaning per this contract at night is for the middle school and high school is under that contract agreement, but they're supported by district staff as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Looking for a motion.
I'll move approval of the, I'm gonna say it wrong here, the contracted cleaning proposal as outlined in Agenda Item 3.3. I second.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 An yes motion passes. Moving on to new business, we will hear about the 2025-26 District Scorecard.
So one of the most important roles of the Board of Education is providing, approving strategic direction, district scorecard measurements, and the strategic plan. So strategy is something that is a critical responsibility of the Board of Education. In 2021, the community recommended some updates to the strategic plan, and the board approved them. And the strategic plan has been the tool that we've been following as we prepare the scorecard on an annual basis. So our mission in the strategic plan says, all students belong and are empowered to learn, grow, and engage as part of a global community. And the strategic plan also set vision, which is cultivating excellence in every student. And then from there, the strategic planning team looked at four pillars and set six strategic priorities. So as they set that, excuse me, as they set those strategic priorities, those are our guiding, our guidepost. And then we set, we, meaning administration, recommends goals aligned with those strategic priorities every year. And so this year, I want to walk through what our recommended goals are on the scorecard, and those, I have seven goals for the four pillars and six strategic priorities. So the first strategic priority is to provide every student access to a challenging, balanced, and equitable education that sparks curiosity and engagement. We've had some conversations over the last several years, post-pandemic, around some achievement needs, and we have been turning the ship with some curriculum improvements, some highly-aligned quality curriculum materials, and professional development for staff. We have started to see some increases in achievement that are bringing us up. What those are, again, are embargoed until September, but we'll be happy to report on those when they come. But administration is recommending that we continue to work on that increase in the percentage of students achieving proficiency in ELA and math on standardized assessment measures by another 10%. So that is what we're working on. As we present short cycles for the year, we recommend that we are looking at the actual results of standards-aligned assessment. So I'm open to any conversation or discussion as we go through each of them, because tonight is an opportunity for you to give us, as an administration, feedback so that we can make improvements to these scorecard goals prior to bringing it forward for approval at the August 18th meeting. Any feedback on this one?
Any feedback for Kim?
I think just one question. You talk about the target 10% increase for each grade span. Is that something that, how are you holding that for like a level of accountability? Like, they have the observation, you have the goals, but like, obviously, say it's only 7%, 8%. What is it that you're looking at for target if it's not averaging at that 10% increase, which I think is very aggressive and good, but I was trying to make sure that we're within reason of what the increase is.
So one of the things is we, from a data standpoint, we're trying to increase 10% until we get to 80, because then 80% from a research basis, how much kids, all kids should be able to be at mastery, according to research. So we believe that we can have double-digit gains, which is 10% or higher in our grade level spans. And we're watching that through our short cycles, looking at curricular indicators in ELA and math to see how they're doing and then responding to the instructions. So if they are at a lower threshold, because we're able to kind of watch that, that we're able to address that with the specific teacher, the specific students, or a specific grade level, if we're noticing a curricular issue, or if we're noticing an instructional issue, or if it's a learning issue for our students, so really being able to diagnose those things.
And so then would it be worth it to look at including something like going towards an 80% target? Because I just worry that if we start getting a grade level that is at that 80% or a section, then it's, well, we're looking for a target increase for the whole crew, but for getting one or two, and that's going 82, 83, you know, it's not going to look to the same result as what we're looking for in the grand scope of things.
I think that's great feedback, and we can take that back, for sure.
And in terms of some of the systems that we're continuing to work on, we have the multi-level systems of support so that we're identifying who needs universal instruction, and are there students that, based on those classroom assessments, are needing more intervention? And we have a set of data rules and bi-weekly meetings of teacher teams to look at the results of classroom-based assessments. So that's how we're holding them accountable, and I appreciate that feedback. That is a great idea, to go to the 80% target, and anyone who's below 80%, we're looking for a 10% increase, but approaching or reaching 80% would also meet the goal. The second strategic priority is around, oh, is there more feedback on that first one?
Kathy had feedback.
Okay, just a real quick question. Kim, as far as Act 20, reading training is going, are we, we're in the second year of that, right, in Greendale?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe every staff member who is required to complete that training, plus some has completed the Act 20 training.
That is correct. The last few are finishing up and will be completed by the end of August.
Okay, so just in terms of that 10%, then, too, those teachers will all be at that point where they'll have had that training?
Yeah. And we have a plan for teachers who are coming to us without it, and we're working with new owners who are at the grades that Act 20 affects as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
So the second strategic priority is to prepare K-12 students with the skills to explore and be ready for the college and/or career pathway of their choice. We've done a number of things in this that we've achieved, and when I met with the student board members last year, Maddie suggested that with all of the ACP work and the interest-based ideas, last year, we really focused on bringing in guest teachers to classroom, to courses that were within the career pathways, and she suggested that we expand that so that everyone has an opportunity. So here, what we're looking to do is increase student access to the community partners to either present, coach, and engage with students in one of five career pathways, the ones that are most heavily aligned with where our students have been going, and our highest level of student interest using some of that ACP data where they have interest inventories and skill alignment. So healthcare, business, human services, communication, and media, as well as stuff. So we'll be focusing on the number of students participating and opportunities, and we'll share some of the opportunities that were provided. And so I'm ready for feedback on that recommendation.
Any feedback?
I'd like to ask our students if you have any feedback on that. I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but what, do those areas seem good to you?
Yeah, I think it's important to allow everyone to have access to those opportunities and make them more widespread, because we do have them. It's just not everyone, like, knows that they're there. So providing that and expanding it, I feel like would be really helpful for students.
Thank you.
I had spoken with Kim earlier today, as far as, like, job, jobs after college and career pathways, I had mentioned to her that with everything changing so quickly, especially with AI, maybe we should at least be aware of what's out there and the changes that are coming forth, so that we are offering, like, the right or the better opportunities for the students to find jobs. Tell me your thoughts on that.
We're actually going, we have a team of teachers, and our tech director and myself are going to an AI conference on Wednesday, really to make sure that we're staying abreast of all the changes, because they are so fluid right now, and working with our teachers on how to utilize it, and then seeing how we can ensure that we're giving our kids access to AI in an appropriate way, and they're also getting some, we are piloting some curricular materials around teaching kids around AI at the middle school through informational technology class.
I think that's very helpful, and it might actually help to shape, shift, and potentially a future academic and career planning lesson that happens during advisory, where students are spending some time focusing on how do you determine where the market is shifting and where, what jobs are available. So doing some sort of lesson on that, like, here's your interests, now let's see what's available, what's happening in the marketplace in that space. So that's a good recommendation, and we'll work on how we can put that into the.
How much do we use, as a school district, do we use, like, RIT or technology partners and various teachers? How much do they interact with the students or give them, it's like a flip-the-script kind of idea, where they see the access and what they're doing on a daily-day basis here just in the district?
We're starting some of that. I mean, through the informational technology, we kind of got some feedback around how often kids are using it, how they are using it, so that we're able, we were, I think, some people were very surprised with how often kids are using AI and how they're using it. So that was really informative for us to know how to meet them where they're at. And then also with Danielle Brannan, who is our new media specialist, you guys all met, when she did her lead year, library and media presentation with Tara, she is also a huge advocate and has been working with us around how to support students in that as, to also make sure that we're, one, being responsive, and, two, we're being safe and making sure we're following all the protocols, and working with Ryan Jonas, our director of technology. So our new, we upgraded our infra, our tech team that used to kind of support teachers around new technologies and how to log in and do things like that. We just created a new team that is also supposed to look at the work around AI and how to ensure that our kids have access and our teachers do, and what that's going to look like in the future.
I guess I'm kind of looking also, too, just even in like the strategic priority, that we're utilizing the student access to the partners within our own district. Like, I know, you know, who's, you know, who we already have relationships with, you know, whether it's an HVAC engineer or looking at the technology team. Are we utilizing some of these people as a way to shadow or engage some of those students, like the health careers pathway? Do we have the NP kind of walk them through a little bit when they're here? Like, are we utilizing those services here already, or people, opportunities?
Yeah, I think that's really good feedback.
Yeah, we are using some and not all. We have not marketed to them in the same way that we've been working in other spaces, but Tom Herman has been working with teachers in those pathways, and I do know that some of them have been out. Educators Rising, that is, Maddie, you can speak to this, but that's almost exclusively where we get our guest speakers, our teachers in the field in our district. And I do believe that Mrs. Goyette has gone out to do some communications work with classes. So we have not capitalized on that as much as we could, but we have started to work with the resources we have in building.
Anyone else have anything? All right, we can move on.
All right, the third strategic priority is to strengthen our relationships with families and community, the sense of belonging, mutual respect, and safety for all families, inclusive of all racial or ethnic identities. One of the things that we have been hearing from families recently is that there's so many places to look, and we've heard that from staff at times, too. And we've been working to streamline those communications, but we have some people who are dependent on Facebook, we have some people who are dependent on The Weekly, we have some people who don't read The Weekly and are looking for it on Facebook. And so what we're looking to do with this goal is to increase the consistency of both our one-way and our two-way communication between families and districts.
Like, are we utilizing those services here already or people, opportunities?
Yeah, I think that's really good feedback.
Yeah, we are using some and not all. We have not marketed to them in the same way that we've been working in other spaces. But Tom Herman has been working with teachers in those pathways. And I do know that some of them have been out. Educators Rising, that is, Maddie, you can speak to this, but that's almost exclusively where we get our guest speakers, our teachers in the field in our district. And I do believe that Mrs. Goyette has gone out to do some communications work with classes. So we have not capitalized on that as much as we could, but we have started to work with the resources we have in building.
Anyone else have anything? We move on.
All right, the third strategic priority is to strengthen our relationships with families and community. The sense of belonging, mutual respect, and safety for all families, inclusive of all racial or ethnic identities. One of the things that we have been hearing from families recently is that there's so many places to look. And we've heard that from staff at times too. And we've been working to streamline those communications, but we have some people who are dependent on Facebook. We have some people who are dependent on the Weekly. We have some people who don't read the Weekly and are looking for it on Facebook. And so what we're looking to do with this goal is to increase the consistency of both our one-way and our two-way communication between families and district staff through the adoption of a universal platform and protocols for frequency and format of communication. We've recently transitioned the website, which was shared with all families as part of the back-to-school check-in online registration system. And the new website platform has some features and tools that allow us to have an app so that families and district staff and students have one place to look. And they log into that app and they can see essentially filtered content based on their role and their needs. And it is in a format that's similar to a social media platform, but it's taken out all the ads and all of the white noise that is taking you in other directions. So we are working to train staff on how to use that platform so that we can increase our focus for our communication with our families and our students.
Is that an app that works within the Chromebook? So it'd be like a Chromebook edition or like an app they download that they could log into via the school software?
I know Kitty's there. Is Ryan still there?
They're both nodding yes. And it's cool because when you download it off of the apps, it looks, it says Greendale Schools app. So it's not, you don't have to look for a different app. It is our app. So it's, and it's very slick when you go into it. It looks very professional. It looks like a Greendale Schools Instagram. And it is, it's very user-friendly too. As someone who just downloaded it was like, ooh.
Anyone else have anything to add?
Just a quick comment. I really liked the way, as I was looking through this over the weekend, that the priorities one, two, and three all dovetail together. And I think that that says a lot about the, the way that, that Dr. Midsick and the administration and the teachers look at their roles and responsibilities. They all go, they all complement each other really well and can build off of each other. Certainly more involved parents lead to better scores and more involvement with kids. There is a wealth of people who can offer us, you know, healthcare and STEM and other, you know, opportunities and guest speakers. And then obviously the whole community benefits by bringing more people in. So I, I just loved the way that those three of them came together in such a nice way. And so I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you. The fourth strategic priority is to provide appropriate training to support student well-being and staff to meet student mental health needs. And we have a number of new members of our team. A new school psychologist, two new school psychologists, two new social workers, and one new-ish school counselor. So in order to maintain the continuity of program and response, that response is so important for the well-being of our students. Our goal recommendation here is to build consistency of the people services. Oops, that says serves, but it should say services. Team responds through onboarding of the new members of the team and training for everyone, administrators and people services team members on evidence-based practices for building resilience in students and trauma-informed response. So some of us have had that training before, but a refresher is really important. And others have been on-boarded since that training was delivered. And it would be critical for us to all be back on the same page to ensure that consistency of response so that when students or teachers are seeking support, that we have consistency among our team. Open for feedback on this priority area.
So we talked about this earlier today. I don't remember what the name of that survey was. There was, this is kind of goes with healthy communities and like respect among the students when, in the school. I think it's like a
Panorama?
Yeah.
No, she's, no, she's referring to the Sabre Screener.
Oh, okay.
Maybe that
Sabre Screener?
No, I feel like
Yes, the Sabre Screener.
Well, I was, it was at a parent teacher advisory meeting at the middle school and Ray was going through like the results. And it looked like overall that they're like, do you feel safe? Do you have a trusted adult? Do you feel that you are shown respect by fellow students? Do you have students, you know, do you have a close friend? And overall, it looked maybe that it was improving, but we asked to have it split out between like the male and the female. And the, it, the male answers skew what the females are answering. So in general, the males' response were that they do feel that they're being treated with respect. But like from a female perspective, they were like maybe 10 points lower. So I'm just thinking that it would be nice to like take that and like maybe split it out. So to find, I think it just has to have a deeper dive. And I think maybe if we address some of that situation that goes on like in the hallways and like the interactions at the lunchroom, that, I mean, it might make a big difference.
Yeah, I think from a school-based level, we absolutely need to look at the demographic groups and make sure that we're making sure that if there are those discrepancies, that we're addressing those and making sure that we're following through with people services and teachers and giving kids the tools so they do feel seen and regardless of their demographic background.
So I don't, yeah, I don't know where that rested last, you know, this past school year, but I, I'm sure you could.
Yeah, I can definitely follow up.
And we certainly look at
We'll take a look, we'll take a look at the data to determine if there is an area that needs to be targeted and consider adding a goal under this priority that would be focused on building culture and climate based on that data feedback. So I appreciate that reminder to look back at that data.
All right, thanks.
We do disaggregate the data when we meet for our DAT meetings because we're looking at that SEL component. But we can certainly continue to do that as well to make sure that we're looking at all different types of things.
Anyone else have anything to add?
Okay, the fifth strategic priority is recruit and retain quality staff, including staff representative of our students. And what we've been talking about for the past several years is we don't have enough subs. Our classroom teachers and our parent professionals are frequently subbing. And as we looked at the data around that, we had over 2,000 unplanned staff absences last year, which when calculated by total time over the year, equated to almost eight full-time staff members. And so we have been working and frequently and constantly interviewing for subs. And our sub pool is just smaller and there's fewer subs available. So another way to approach this problem is to reduce the number of unplanned teacher and support staff absences. The target is 10%, which would be to reduce between 180 and 200 days of absence over the course of the school year. And we're not looking to ask people to come to work sick. We're not asking people to do things that would be unsafe or unhealthy for our students. But what, we are going to be working with an employee group to talk about what would be an incentive to schedule your dentist appointment for 3:30 instead of 11:00 and using a full day of absence. So those are the kinds of things that we'll be looking at and understanding a little bit deeper where the absences are happening and what we can redo. Our, our workload for teachers by not having them cover classes as often by reducing the number of absences. I'm open to feedback on that.
Thank you. This is, this, this has been my, my thing all year. And so I think that this is great and I appreciate that you're getting students, teachers involved in this conversation. So I just want to say thank you.
Anyone else? No, all right, we're good.
Okay, and then the last strategic priority is to support innovation to remain competitive and a district of choice for families. There are two recommended goals under this. The first is to pilot the virtual charter for sixth through 12th grade and establish a charter with the Greendale Global Academy Board. And even if you don't want to approve this goal, we're already moving forward with it because you did approve the running of this pilot to move towards a charter. So we have eight students who have expressed interest and we are working to get them registered in classes through Greendale Global Academy in the next two weeks. Any other conversation about that?
I'm not seeing any.
All right, and then the final one, which is also under support innovation and remain competitive in a district of choice, is to increase our fund balance. We were recently contacted by Moody's, which is a rating service. And Jonathan, you can jump in or talk over me at any point if you want to. Because we triggered a review based on the reduction in fund balance that the board planned for when we were having a conversation with the community about making cuts or approving an operational referendum. So now that we have completed that conversation and the community has shared its interest, we were able to have that conversation with Moody's, which is the index rating, and remain at the same level of the same rating as we've been. But part of remaining at that is to build our fund balance back to within policy targets between 15 and 20%. And so the goal is to increase fund balance by 1% in '25, '26.
Anyone have anything to add? We're all good.
All right, so that concludes all of our recommended scorecard goals. And we will take the feedback, make some modifications, and bring that back for discussion and hopefully approval at the August 18th meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the annual meeting agenda.
So the annual meeting is scheduled for September 15th. And we need to provide notice to the community of the agenda. So I am, I'm bringing forward an agenda for your review and discussion. There are a couple of important powers of the annual meeting, and that is to authorize school board salaries, adopt the tax levy recommendations from the community, and authorize payment of actual and necessary expenses of school board members when traveling and the performance of duties. So those are on the agenda. The current agenda is in compliance with what is expected to happen at a meeting. And we will be looking at some commendations at the meeting, which I do not see on here, but we will. There are two groups that I'm going to be having a conversation with to see if they can come and hopefully begin the meeting after the national anthem, have some commendations for a number of group, for two groups that have contributed significantly over the course of the year. So are there any questions or suggestions about the annual meeting agenda?
Kathy?
I just have one thing because every year we do this and there's not a real good representation of the community at this. Has there been any thought in like ways to try to engage the community more in the annual meeting?
Yes, there has been. There's a number of strategies. First of all, the board has a citizen finance committee and we will be looking to remind them and invite them and bring them in to the meeting so that they participate. I encourage school board members to talk with the friends, neighbors, families that you associate with and ask them to come because they have an important role at the annual meeting and voting. And then we are also, the commendations will hopefully bring community members who are active and engaged in our community into the meeting to participate in the meeting as a whole.
Any thoughts on like the PTOs at all involving those groups?
Every year I ask principals and you have conversations with any of their groups. So I don't know if you remember, but two, three years ago, it was, one of our goals was around establishing advisory groups for every administrator in the district. So Tasha spoke earlier about going to the middle school parent advisory meeting. So I have asked our principals and our administrators to invite their committee or their teams to the annual meeting as well to participate and engage.
Is it possible to move, I know we talked about the commendation for Canterbury PTO, move that to the annual meeting?
That is what I would suggest. And it's one of the groups that I would suggest that you recognize at the annual meeting.
I would agree with that. I know Angie and her team's put in a lot of work.
Right.
That was a lot of money.
That was a lot of money.
So, yeah, I think the recommendation and recognition would be more than appropriate then.
Yep.
And maybe I will personally reach out to the presidents of all the PTOs this year and ask them to bring their, their teams to the meeting, maybe even precede it with their monthly meeting.
I think too, if we go to, I forget what schools everybody has, but if we go to the first PTO meeting, I know I'm at Canterbury, but
College Park.
Like College Park, Island View. Maybe the representative can go to at least put a bug in their ear.
Well, if it's before the annual meeting though, I don't know when the first PTO meetings are.
I know Canterbury's is usually that first Tuesday, so that would be before the, the annual meeting. At least give them a couple of weeks.
And just, just so you know, Kim, I think we have a role in that too, obviously, reaching out to our network. So, you know, I'm sure every one of us has groups of people we can get the word out to. Typically, there hasn't been a lot of involvement by the village board, but they are invited, obviously. I know there, I've seen
I send letters to them. I send letters to all elected officials and invite them to the meeting.
Okay, so hear me out. Whichever school gets the most people there
Oh, there you go.
Gets like an additive incentive in the fun run. Like you get an extra like 100 participants added to your school for if you have the most kids or the most parents come and register for the school. That fun run is really competitive people. And I think if we were to make it that
Starts now.
Right?
Show up to the annual meeting.
Right? Whichever, whichever school gets the most parents there, you get an extra like 100.
Or how many parents show up?
I'd say how many parents show up, I think would be a great idea. I like that, I like that.
Yeah.
That's the only way to beat
You came, one kid, yeah.
It's the only way to beat College Park.
We beat College Park, right?
I mean, some schools will bring, bring grandparents
We're all winners here in Greendale.
If it's more people, that's more the better, more information to share. That's good.
Grandparents, parents, caregivers, by all means. Yes, please come and participate in your community.
We will certainly take that.
We'll put it on the ad team meeting on Monday.
We want our options are. Yeah, we, our ad team is meeting on Monday, so we'll certainly look at that.
This is the first true test of priority number three.
Look at us already putting that scoreboard in action.
Anyone else have anything to add?
I'd say maybe throw in like a coffee for the administrative team of the school with the highest amount of people. You know, a coffee breakfast to start.
Yeah, I like that.
Something that'd be deliverable as well for them.
Yeah, whoever, whichever school gets the most teachers, the most admins there, yeah.
I assume you guys are a foot in the bill.
Yeah, I chip in.
I love the donations that are flowing in over here.
I will, I will go to Panera and get some bagels, absolutely.
I'll get some coffee for them.
See, let's do this.
I'll get, I'll bring a boombox.
Better yet, I'll go to Sugar and Flour and support a local business and bring all the morning buns y'all want, okay? Because those are amazing.
This might be my favorite board meeting right now.
All right.
All right.
Well, moving on to the board calendar.
So in the next two weeks, there are many opportunities to engage. The most populated one will be the Village Days events this week. There's also the village board meeting tomorrow night in which at 7:00 PM at the Safety Center, they will be addressing the South Ridge Economic Redevelopment. And then the following week, there is a board finance committee meeting on the 13th that overlaps a rescheduled library board meeting, so I'll be making a choice there. And then I believe that is all we have until our next meeting, which is on the 18th. And board, if you are available, you can mark your calendar for teachers' back-to-school presentation, all staff, which will be on Monday morning, August 25th.
All right, any questions?
I, I will just say I'm regretfully, I will not be able I will just say I'm regretfully, I will not be able to be at the welcome back this year. So I'll probably send a little note or something. That is my first day back as well this year. So, but from what I understand, the staff preferred to have it this way because it was two broken up weeks before, right?
That was their request, yes. And we are uttering their feedback.
That's good.
So that's 9:00 AM that morning, right?
Uh, yes. Breakfast begins at 7:30 and our presentation will be done.
Thank you. Moving on, second chance for comments. Still no? Yeah, I gotta, I gotta read a little something here though.
I gotta read something?
I, I do. It's short though, so. Welcome to all those who will be speaking this evening. We would like to remind you that the school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are official business meetings held in public. Through school board bylaw 0167.3, the board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. Persons wishing to address the board are asked to come to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to one time. Individuals who will be speaking will be limited to three minutes. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed 30 minutes. In accordance with this or with the intent of the open meetings law, please be aware that although the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public, it cannot discuss, debate, or debate items brought up during public comments. Board bylaws require that all comments are directed at the presiding officer, who is me. Comments must also refer to items within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. As the presiding officer, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate comments when the statements are too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant to the business of the board. If the presiding officer exercises his or her right to terminate comments under the above guidelines, written comments may be submitted to the presiding officer instead. See, short.
My name's Kyle Menger. I have a 12-year-old son at Greendale Middle School. My address is 6280 West College Avenue here in Greendale. This is my first time attending a meeting. My comments are probably going to be quite offensive to some of you, which is whatever. But so I see a lot of obsession with racial inclusivity and ethnic inclusivity, which when I see that, I see brown and black inclusivity, but white exclusivity. So I guess my, what you guys are doing a lot to promote ethnic and demographic inclusivity to obvious this is like a 90% white community. So my, my question would be, what are you doing to ensure that the white students are feeling included as well as the minority students as well? That's, that's my, my biggest concern because white children nowadays are browbeat. Your ancestors were slave owners and they're, they're browbeat with this anti-white rhetoric. And I want to ensure that my white student is going to feel welcome and now browbeat for hit the color of his skin. So that's, that's, that's my main concern. I've seen two different scenarios where they were talking about demographic inclusivity. When I see that, I, I, I think white exclusivity because you see black excellence groups, whatever, Native American groups. I don't see an all-white group. That's racist. You know, they, they call that racism. So I guess that's just, are you guys doing your best effort to ensure that white students are also feeling welcome and inclusive? Or are you browbeating them, making them, you know, feel racist for the past and all these other things that had nothing to do with them? That's, that's my comments. That's what I have to say. So you don't have to say anything, I guess.
We will follow up with you tomorrow. So we'll give you a call to follow up with you because if that, if some of those things are happening to your child, then we definitely need to address that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And after the meeting, I can get your number and talk to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will adjourn this meeting and the next school board meeting is August 18th at 7:00.